Unless Jenny was.
Am I supposed to bring snacks?
The board member is supposed to bring snacks.
Okay, alright, got it.
Alright, well, if anything else comes up, I'll make sure I let you guys know. If not, I soon we'll talk in more depth.
Construction guys with leather boots. Or at least it has been in the past. It's dry now. Yeah, they've been waiting in the mud the last several months. Alright, thank you. Okay, we are up to second reading on the park board. It's four members. Alex, I think you left in the political. Without regard, appointments will be made without regard to party affiliation pursuant to the waiver of the Indiana Code. One member gets a term of one year, one member gets a term of two years, three years, and four years, so they're staggered. I can say, and I think all the board members are aware, I got an email from Mike, the Kiwanis delegates through the park board are him and Richard Young, correct? So we've got those two seats filled, and I think we'll vote on them next month. Fill these seats, we gotta pass the ordinance. Intent would be to pass it tonight. Get this off the ground. Any questions or discussion from my board members here? I will make the motion that we approve ordinance 2025-5 and ordinance establishing a Department of Parks and Recreation and a Park and Recreation Board for the town of Westport, Indiana, and repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith. Park Board. So I've made the motion. Get a second, please. For us, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ordinance is now passed on second reading. Okay, the next ordinance that is up for second reading, this is a formality, Lori brought this to our attention last month. An ordinance concerning public records request for the town of Westport, Indiana. There are companies out there that go fishing for public record information. And towns are allowed, per Indiana Code, to reasonably restrict this fishing expedition that can get into a lot of time and a lot of money on behalf of towns. And this kind of puts some boundaries around what can be requested. It's pretty clear when things are for commercial purposes. People want the information so they can sell it. Is it for commercial purposes? This basically denies that. Some copying fees, 10 cents per page, 25 cent dollar. Amendment to formality last month. So I will make the motion that we approve ordinance 2025-7 and ordinance concerning public records requests for the town of Westport, Indiana. Second from Russell. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, town welcome bag materials needed. Terilyn, did you put this on here? We have some welcome bags down at the water company, in the water office. Somebody new comes into town and opens up a new water account, they get this welcome bag. I think all the churches have material that they put in there. Andy, I don't know if you've ever put anything in there, a little advertisement about your honey or anything, but anybody that wants to give ink pens or business cards or stuff like. Say again? Menus? Paco's in there? Okay. So, I described them to Jenny as more like a door hanger bag, is what it looks like. Are they bigger?
It's the recycling, no, that cheap.
Is it as big as a Walmart bag?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, with their material. Some of the business will give them to us, their advertising. We just stock as much free information as we have. We put like stickers and we'll have air fresheners in there. Any kind of little freebie that advertise our businesses. They also put the Westport schedule and address, but how to pay your water bill online, but any kind of little flyers like that to acclimate it to the.
How to get. You left over town criers.
You do that.
Okay, okay, good.
I sneak over to the post office. These two, they would bring them over to us, but they've stopped doing that a few years ago. So I sneak over to the post office and grab them all out of the trash can. Because almost everybody throws them away, and I get a stack like this big.
Okay.
So on Town Crier Day, I'm stocking the post office between me and Terilyn.
You're dumpster diving, yes, what you're doing.
But it works.
Okay, so if anybody's got anything or knows of a business, we're open to more stuff to put welcome bags for the community. Okay. Dumpster days for the fall, we're looking at establishing date. We were talking a little bit before the meeting. We're looking in October. Jenny is going to be out of town 16th. She is our delegate to the Solid Waste Management Board, but there will be no recycling, no paper shredding or anything like that this time. So this is just going to be big trash, what it will be. And we're looking at October 16th or October 23rd. Guys feel? I would prefer when Jenny comes back.
The 16th. The week of the 16th.
So that would be a reason to have it on the 16th. 16. Oh, Glenn couldn't help. So, you have helped in the past, and when Jenny's in town, she works on Thursday, but she has taken an evening shift. I think last time in the spring, we did 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Thursday. She did from like 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the evening in the dumpster. And there was a little bit of traffic that came through then. It'd be like me and Glenn, and then Dolores and Russell in the afternoon or something on the 13th. Let's go with the 23rd. I would prefer to have you here.
I'd be here.
Yeah, I'd prefer that. Well, we. Sorry?
Are we doing it 8:00 a.m.?
Yes. 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So Friday, I typically go down there and I man the dumpster until maybe noon. But if they fill up on Thursday, will be no Friday out. Got another water bill that can come out, and we will probably just stuff an envelope, letting everybody know that there'll be Big Trash Day on October 23rd. Think we take anything except no tires, no air conditioners or anything with freon. Around the paint.
No batteries. Ferbly.
There's usually lots of mattresses. We had a canoe in the spring, somebody got rid of. It was a little strange. We had. Okay. Get right. Right. Yeah, we had a guy drop off 50 or 60 gallon jugs, the plastic. Yeah, it was kind of weird. Alright, let's see where we're at now. Trick or treat hours. So back to. Halloween is on a Friday night. Do you know what we've done trick or treat hours in the past? Five to eight. Okay. Let's put that in the form of a motion, so we can get into the minutes. I'll make the motion that we do trick or treat on Friday, the 31st, from five to eight. Got a second from Dolores. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Superintendent of Public Works, Damon, on.
Starting next week, we'll start seeing more traffic from county highway, starting to prepare to replace the bridge just east of town, just east of the street. They're going to start taking out vegetation, stuff along the roads and along the creek. But somewhere around October 1st, give or take a few days, weeks. They'll actually start working on the bridge, so it will be closed.
How long is it projected to take?
He didn't really say. He wouldn't really give me a timeline.
Is it days or weeks?
Oh, it'd be weeks.
Weeks.
Yeah, it'd be weeks for sure. Probably a couple of months. But starting next week, we'll start seeing some traffic. For the dump, starting next Wednesday, we'll reopen the dump on Wednesdays. So projects kind of come to a halt. I'm just getting them this week to get out of the way and cleaned up. So on that note, we are no longer going to take mattresses down there because I mean, when we put a mattress in there, it pretty much fills up, and we don't have trash, so.
I didn't even know that we did.
Yeah, we tried it, it's just not working out for us. So if you have a mattress, you'll just have to take that to the dump at Greensburg or to the Greensburg trash site. And recyclables, I'm trying to get them to get us on a two-week rotation to where they swap out the recyclables every two weeks. It's about every two weeks it fills up, and it seems to be an issue. They want us to call. They're full, but then when I call, it's another two weeks till they get there. So we're throwing a lot of them away. Well, the problem we're running into is people just throwing them away, well then we don't have room to pay trash.
Yeah, I think it was two weeks ago, I had to throw my recyclables in the dumpster because the bin was full.
Also has to pay for packing then, which is.
Correct. So what I've instructed Corky to do, if people don't want to take their recyclings home, and they want to throw them away, then they're going to have to pay as if it's trash. I mean, that's only fair to us, so.
Okay.
But I think I've got them talked into letting us go on a two-week rotation to where in two weeks they're, but if we're not full, then I gotta call and say, hey, we're not full, no, don't swap it out. So I thought that was fair. So a few things are changing there. And I wanted to explain the, all the water main breaks we had here a couple of weeks ago, or all the conspiracy theories, you know, on Facebook here of what happened. Obviously, most of them do not know. We did go on county water, but that's not what caused the breaks. What caused the breaks was we switched to county water so we could drain water towers so it could get inspected. And while we were on county water, our service pumps at the water plant accidentally got turned on by us, and we didn't realize they got turned on. Well, when the pressure from county water and the pressure from water plant was on at the same time, it shot the pressure up, obviously 150, 160 p. a. hour. Our system can't take that, you know, some of the old lines, and that's what started blowing the old pipes apart. Just when I say old pipes, it was the old pipes. Now the cast or the plastic pipes blew apart, it was all the old AC lines. So that's why we had 10 main breaks. I thought the guys handled it very well. You know, we did have a little bit of overtime in late nights. We had to call O'Meara for one because it broke right at the hydrant leg and quit with the equipment. Fixed that one, so it was a good time to get a new hydrant, and we had a new hydrant on. But I thought overall, it was handled pretty well. Made it through. It was a tough week, but it was just a, it was an accident, you know. I mean, why does it happen? But it happened. That should end the series of what went on. Does anybody got any questions for me?
Will the streets go back? All of those repaired?
Obviously, we got time to settle, but a few of them, we can start. I do got to go get some, we don't have any cold patches to. I was hoping to get a few of the places, you know, hot mix put in, but since the projects kind of, projects kind of got put on hold, hot mix probably ain't going to happen this year. So I am going to get everybody fixed back up with cold patch, at least it's asphalt in there, you know, for the winter. I'll get your drive fixed. I know yours is one of.
Well, yeah, but by the Christian church, like that's the one that is.
Yeah, well, that was.
It's a big one, so.
Obviously, that's one of the new ones. And that's what people don't understand is a lot of the older lines, the AC lines, you don't want to, you can't just immediately start driving on it. You want to let it naturally settle as long as you can. So it doesn't, it's not like plastic or steel. It's just, you just have to let it settle or you just immediately start driving on it. So I mean, as soon as we can, and the good thing about cold patches, it's, you can put it in when it's cold or hot anyway. So, but as soon as I, as soon as we get some rain, and the quicker we can get some rain, the quicker it'll start settling down, I start letting people drive on them. Like, obviously, like yours and a few others, it wasn't part of the main break, you know, we started patching some of those, or like Dolores's driveway. I was hoping to get, hers is part of another project, but I was hoping to get hot mix in hers this year, but she's probably going to get cold mix as well for this year. But we'll get it tore out in spring or something, get hot mix put back in it, but if everybody can just bear with us, we'll get through it.
You know what was going on in front of, it was just up from Brian Jones's house. I saw CenterPoint Energy, and it looked like they had cut into the street, so.
Yeah, I don't know. I thought he was getting a water line put in, and I thought that's who was there this morning working, was the water line people. And they say, no, I seen CenterPoint there, so I don't know if gas line got hit, or. Oh, is that what it was? Yeah, so I don't know. So I don't know if they found the gas leak. Okay, so, yeah, I don't know if they, if they found it when they started the water lines, stopped, or if that was just two different jobs going on, or what was going on. But, yeah, they was there.
Did they still coming with the hot patch?
Yes, as far as I know, he hasn't said anything different. But, yeah, we do have a company come tomorrow, demo crack fill. It's not hot patch machine, but it's crack filling machine. He says he'll be here about 8 o'clock, so he's got to have an hour to warm up. He'll be here at 9:00 to demo, if anybody wants to. I'm a. Would that be a quorum if more of them want to see that? I mean, it's just a demo, a company coming to demo a machine. A big question for you.
It shouldn't be more than two of us.
Because we're not looking at purchasing one or nothing. They're just coming to do a demo.
When is the demonstration?
Tomorrow at 9:00.
I mean, there are certainly exceptions to that requirement. I know for like economic development purposes, if you wanted to have like a, like, let's say you wanted to have a demonstration at a factory or something like that that was going to be built, you could have, you could have a quorum. For something like this, I'd have to give you, I'd have to look it up and actually look at the exception. I probably gather a little bit more information before I can tell you for sure. So probably until I can get an affirmative answer on that, I would recommend not having quorum at that meeting. If that's something that you'd like for me to turn around for you here.
I'd say he'd basically come to demo it for us, to show us how to use it.
Where is it going to be?
Town Hall.
Dolores and I will be inside for office hours. If either of you guys want to see it, stay outside.
Yeah, it's a machine, and one reason we're doing it, because what they do is if we purchase the rubber to fill in the cracks on the road, because the community crossing's kind of cracking down on, basically, you got to start doing road maintenance, or you're not going to get no money. That's one thing we can do relatively pretty cheap. But if you buy a whole skid of rubber at a time, they give you the machine free to do it. He's coming down to demo and plus you can purchase machine, you know, if you ever get the money. So it's a good way for us to get a free demo and.
Can you send me a video highlight? The demo?
Sure. I mean, I can try if I remember to take one. So, yeah, it's just, it's lesson plus demo.
Okay.
Shows how to operate.
Alright.
There we go. No, he's going to take us, he's going to actually do a couple of streets in town and show us how to operate it.
Alright, thank you. Food Pantry sent me a flyer and wanted to invite the community to an open house. Whoa, easy there. Slide up and down. There we go. So this is on Saturday, the 20th, September, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Everybody know where the Food Pantry is over here on Mulberry Street. It's across from the Christian church. They're going to have an open house, and I think anybody's free to stop in and get the nickel tour, see what they're doing. Give me to share that. The Water Tower Project, we are having public engagement meetings. There's going to be one tomorrow. Actually, there's two meetings tomorrow, open to the public, Tuesday at 11:00 at the Town Hall, and then there'll be another one at 6:00 here in the Community Building. There will be light refreshments, cookies, bottled water. The engineer will be on site to answer questions. And this is directly related to the water survey that you got in your water in Sewerville. It was inside the envelope of the QR code to scan. So SIRPC, the Regional Planning Ladies from over at Osgood. For sales, thank you. They are going to be in town tomorrow, and they are bringing hard copies of these, of the water in Sewerville, the water survey, and the park survey. Some people don't like to scan QR codes with their phone, but the park survey is back there on the entrance to the kitchen. I was here during the barbecue, talked to a few people, and handing out the QR code pages, but we will have hard copies of these surveys at the water company. They're at the window where you pay your bill. If you want to fill one out on paper and write comments and do check marks and stuff like that, then you can pick up a hard copy of the survey. The park survey, there is also, in addition to a survey that you can do online, there are display boards that they have. There is one inside the double door entrance here at the Community Building. It's a pretty good size, it's poster board size. It's got four questions on it, and there's Post-it notes. You can write comments on the Post-it notes for each of the questions and post them on the board. There's also one down at the Town Hall. You can do the same thing. So you can do a paper survey, you can do an online survey, or you can go into the library, you can look at this display board, and you can write your comments down on Post-it notes. Want to amass, how long, how many, how often do you use the park? Daily, weekly, monthly? What's something you'd like to see at the park in five years? What the other two questions are. But it's really pretty simple. I did the park survey on my phone. I did the water survey on the computer. It, there's a, what you got in your water bills, there was a web address at the bottom. You have to type that in exactly as it's shown on the paper. If you do that, you go right to the survey, and it was very easy. So I did one on my laptop, and I did one on my phone. They take five or 10 minutes. It's really easy to do. We're wanting to look forward, we're wanting to get community input, so please take advantage of these. Talked about the sewer project update meeting. It is Thursday at 1:00. Jenny, you're going to come. I'll be here as soon as I can get here to the emergency management meeting. Alright, we are at the end of the agenda, and we will open it up for public comments for anybody to bring up anything that you would like. Yes, sir. Please.
Quick question as to where we were at on the seal coating out at the cemetery.
Damon, help answer that. I think we've had Alex send a letter.
The warm weather is.
Yes.
Going in.
I'm sorry, Mike, that I made you walk up there just for that. I'll be more accommodating next time, and I'll restate the question so people can hear it. Alright. Anything else? Only once?
Nope, nope, nope.
Yes.
What are you going to say anything?
Okay.
I got to do it.
Alright.
What, if you are building something on your property, what is the procedure to get your building permit? And do, does the town board have any say-so on what goes on that property?
If it's a plotted lot, it's already been zoned, and the the plan or the house plan fits within all of the boundaries that it would need to be. Ladies that wanted to put the double wide with the foundation, I think them coming here was right, because that fell under the Mobile Home Ordinance. The town worked all that out, but if. I mean, when Linda Mazingo built her house over on Westwood, she didn't come here. she didn't come here.
The process when someone calls us and says, whether it's a privacy fence, whether it's a swing, whether it's a barn, whatever it is, I always tell them to call and double check with them for zoning regulations because we follow their rules. We accepted them, I think, back in 2021. And it's a huge book of zoning rules and regulations. It talks about how big your fence can be, how far it can be away from the edge of the road. If you build an, like a barn, how big it has to be. If you build a house, how big it has to be to be considered a house. So there are a lot of regulations, but they are all managed. So if they feel the need to require them to do a permit or any kind of other educational things that they need when they're building, whatever it is they're putting on their property, is county managed. What is nice about the county is if somebody needs an exception or a variance, they will often.
Then they kick it back to us.
Yeah, they will ask us for a letter of permission prior to permitting it. So if someone's building a barn, it's going to be less than the 30-foot variance or whatever. They'll have to come here first and get a letter from us. We've seen that a few times. But we don't manage any of the permits. I often get people that will call me from out of state asking what our permit regulations are. And I always refer them to the Decatur County Courthouse. They don't manage it.
So with that being said. You go up and you want to put a swimming pool in your yard. And you want to put it in your front yard. But you go up and you get a permit for that swimming pool.
You're talking about in-ground?
No, up ground. But you don't tell them that you're wanting to put it in the front yard. You put it in the front yard, it's not supposed to be in the front.
I didn't know swimming pools required permits.
They're up to a certain size.
If they are over, big pardon? What?
What matters?
I don't know. Because I heard that there was an ordinance, I can't find it, and I've been through it. I heard there was an ordinance that there couldn't be a, a, a non-permanent swimming pool in the front yard.
Town ordinance or county?
No. Don't have anything like that.
I was going to say, I didn't know.
I was going to say, the only, the only thing I know of for swimming pools is making sure that they ladder there all the time or it has to be locked.
Right.
Yeah, correct. Yeah. So the kids can't get in. And that's county. I know. We don't have any rules here, but we accept kind of their rules. So, I mean, technically, we can ask the county to enforce it if there's an issue.
And then what do you do if somebody decides this is my piece of property and I want to put a privacy fence up? And I'm going to put it up and I'm going to put it up where I want to put it up. Regardless of what you want me, what you say or what you do.
Well, if, if, if it's on an easement and the utility needs to get to, make use of that easement, then the fence will come down.
But we don't have the right to call up there and say they put it on an easement and we make them turn it down.
The easement is our ordinance. It's us.
So we have the right to ask them to take that fence down?
Yeah.
We passed an ordinance in, year 24 specifically for that because we had issues with, we had this bad sewer blockage back here between one of these streets, Elizabeth and Lincoln or somewhere like that. And there were privacy fences on right of way. And they were very upset that we had to take down part of their privacy fence to get into the sewer line. But it was all replaced and made right, but it took a while.
And, I mean, anybody that's got a fence now that's on an easement runs the risk of having to have it taken down if the utility needs to get in there and do something. The ordinance is to prevent people from putting stuff, any, anything further on easements. I just had one this week ask me. Gave him a copy of the ordinance and told him he needed to be back. There was a, a 10-foot, that was a Damon, that was the one that I asked you about. There's a 10-foot utility easement.
We'll run into this again on the second phase of the wastewater project because we have sewer lines that mobile homes are sitting on top of, airports are sitting on top of, corners of barns are on top of, because nobody really checked into where their sewer lines were when they put their building up.